All right, Evelyn, can we get started with roll call?
Trustee Lee and trustee King are absent. Trustee Marquez?
Here.
Vice President Weekly?
Present.
President Wells?
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Redwood City School Board. Si necesita interpretación en español, por favor llama al 978-990-5137. Y presiona 8377041, el signo de número. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita y transmisora situado al fondo de la sala. All right, thank you for joining us tonight as our partners in education. The board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they're on the agenda. To do so, just fill out a speaker's card. They're located at the front of the entrance to the room and then just hand it to Evelyn. Or if you're attending via Zoom, you can submit a speaker's card online from the links in the agenda, or just raise your Zoom hand when the topic comes up. And then, to be fair to all speakers, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay, can we get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Okay. We're on to public comment. I do have one speaker's card, I think, just this one in person, and it's from Carl Anders. Carl, you'll have, I know you know this, but I'm going to remind you, you'll have three minutes. The timer is right at the front of the podium.
All right, good evening, board members. Thank you. We have just the right three because I'm going to refer back to a February decision that you made. So I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And unfortunately, last week, I wasn't able to speak on a topic that came up in the bond consent, which is on the funding of air conditioning rentals. And that's $155,000 expense that you approved under the bond, Measure S Bond Funds. I want to take you back to February where you approved the project initially to purchase and rent cooling units, which we all needed and have been greatly appreciated. And at that meeting, you directed the district to use bond funds for purchase of capital assets, but to use operating funds for rentals. And that was the appropriate decision. Bond funds should be used for capital projects and facilities improvements, not for short-term rentals. So when the item was presented to you last week on the agenda, it asked you to approve $155,000 in rental expense, and referred to the February meeting, but didn't mention that back then you directed the district to use operating expense, not bond funds. And I'm sure that was just an oversight, but I would greatly appreciate if you would reconsider your decision for consistency with the direction that you gave to the district back in February, to be in compliance with bond requirements, and just to be a good steward of taxpayer bond money. The money that the taxpayers are giving you will be paid back over 30 years. It doesn't make sense to use that for a two-month rental of an air conditioning unit. So please reconsider. The cooling is fantastic. Let's just use the correct funds to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, for your comments, and I know you've emailed a few of us as well. I don't see anyone else for public comment. Okay, great. Then we are going to move on to our discussion items. We have several policies up for tonight. The first one is BP 0520, which is intervention in underperforming schools.
Well, my two partners on the board policy committee are absent, so I will represent tonight. We do have a variety of board policies tonight and coming your way certainly at each board meeting. So I wanted to, I know the board has read them in advance. I appreciate that. Wanted to open up any discussion on this particular item.
Cecilia or David? No, it looked good to me. I didn't have any comments or questions about it. Okay, thanks. Thanks for preparing it. We're on to the next one, which is 6.2, and this is Board Policy 5131. This is conduct.
Yes, regarding conduct. This is an update, and of course, as is noted, the CSBA items are in red, and any staff changes are in highlighted yellow. This board policy really is directing the district to ensure that it's updated every five years. So that was actually noted in there. And there is other updates about suspensions and expulsions. Any questions on this one or comments?
And all of the red lines here and so forth were red versus any being yellow. So it's 100% CSBA language is my interpretation.
That is true.
Okay.
Yeah, look good. And since we're talking about the meta part of it, I did appreciate the new highlighting. I think it was great. Later on, I think later policies, we can see the difference where it's in there. But I found it really helpful to understand where the changes were coming from.
Yes.
Cecilia, any comments, or should we move on to 6.3? Okay, 6.3 is BP and AR 5141.52. This is suicide prevention.
And once again, an update. We do have mental health positions, so this policy also addressed districts that didn't. But in general, I just wanted to open it up for any further discussion.
Looks again, similarly, it's 100% CSBA language. It's obviously a very important subject, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciated the alignment with SB 1318 to, you know, encourage districts to have school mental health professionals. I know we have them here. If only it came with funding along with encouragement, that would have been amazing. But I'm really proud of the program that we have here, so I'm glad that we're already doing that.
Thank you.
6.4, ready to move on? Yeah, okay, 6.4 BP and AR 6174. This is education for English learners.
I was pleased we were able to have our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services on Herrera and our Director of Multilingual Learners, Catherine Rivera, at the Board Policy Committee meeting for the focused items on ed services, this being one of them. We did do something unusual and take out high school in our ed code, which was a wild move, because we typically don't make changes. I've actually said that publicly many times, but it seemed appropriate to do so. And then there were other highlighted changes noted in this particular one. We wanted to note that the district potentially down the line for other courses besides math may be offering acceleration. And then, of course, our enrichment courses, we wanted to make sure those were added in properly as well. And that was a recommendation for the staff changes and with the board policy committee. And then at the very bottom of this one, we wanted to also add new language. So this was highlighted in yellow regarding DLAC meetings and updates to the board. So that was something new that we discussed and put in there.
Yeah, that was great. And this is the one where the highlighting really, really made the difference. And I appreciated the recommendation that the staff put in there for ensuring that being an English learner doesn't block access to any of the classes that we have, regardless of whether it's enrichment or acceleration or what have you. So that was, that was great to see. 6.5 homework. This is Board Policy 6.54 on homework and makeup work.
For this board policy, there are a handful of board policies that are starting to come in that talk about artificial intelligence. And there is actually a presentation coming up in the fall on this topic. So we're holding actually the board policy on artificial intelligence. But this particular board policy is starting the conversations about how, you know, AI could potentially be used in student assistance for technology and so forth. But other than that, I'm pleased to bring this one to you tonight because it's been a while since we've had an update on this particular board policy. Any questions?
I had none. Looked good to me. Nope. All right, thanks, Wendy. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to our consent agenda. We'll pass all of them in one motion.
I move we approve our consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to action items. This is 8.1. It's resolution number 10. This is approval of education code for teaching assignments for the 25, 26 school year.
Hopefully, this will be the last one coming to you, but this is an item where we would appreciate the board's approval in order to allow this teacher to move forward in this assignment.
Yeah, look good. Kennedy needs social sciences, so it makes sense to me. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve resolution 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have another one, a resolution 11. This is approving the agreement with KIP Excellencia for Proposition 2 Charter of School Facilities Program Rehabilitation Funding at the Fair Oaks site. I believe we have someone presenting.
Yeah, I'll just introduce and hand off to Adam. Tonight, we're bringing resolution number 11, which is approving the agreement, as you just stated, President Wells. Adam Kay, the Director of Real Estate for KIP Public Schools, is here to give a short presentation that I'll share.
That? Yeah, just like that. Perfect.
Am I good?
Yep.
Oh, there we go. Thanks very much to the board and to the superintendent and to everyone else here for giving us the opportunity to present this to you about Proposition 2. Prop 2, as I imagine the board knows, is a proposition that was passed by the voters in November of 2024. It authorizes $10 billion for facilities improvements. And there's a separate bucket for district schools and for charter schools. So we will not be competing with the district directly on any of these funds. It is for repair, upgrade, construction of facilities, specifically of facilities. And we think that one of the excellent things about this is it gives us the opportunity, potentially because it's competitive program, that we could do repairs to the district's facilities without the district having to spend any of its own money. So in a sense, it's a true win-win. So what we're looking to do is, a lot of what we're doing is is improvements to the grant. Would, okay, a lot, the application that we're putting in would allow for us to do improvements to the grounds, to facilities, to blacktop, to the field, to a lot of exterior parts of the school, as well as some casework and other work on the interior of the school. We also propose would be to add a TK classroom to our current inventory of modulators at the school. I think, as you know, we have eight modulators at the school, which we put in, oh, I don't know, it must have been seven or eight years ago, or something like that. And so they've been there a long time. I actually, I haven't been down here for a while. I went to the campus for the first time in like three or four years, and I haven't been here so long that that building wasn't there last time I was here. So there definitely have been changes around here. I'm finally sort of coming back down, down south of Oakland and looking at some of the schools. So the campus actually looks good, and we appreciate the work that the district has done on the campus over the years. You know, we've been in a partnership with the district now for a long time. And, okay, next slide, please. So the Prop 2 program allows for, it's like half grant, half loan from the state. So that's the 50%, you know, 50%. It is a, like I said, it's a competitive program. We don't know if we're going to get any funds from the application. There's a lot of schools looking for facilities money. We are looking for it for seven of our schools. Now, we have, in the, not the Bay Area anymore, now we're all Northern California because we're in Stockton. We have 23 schools now, but seven of them were looking for these funds. And we don't, we don't know if we're going to get them. We hope we're going to get some because, as we all know, facilities get old. We would not, as a, just so you know, we would not increase our enrollment over what is currently in our charter. That obviously dictates how many students we can have at KIP Excellencia at Fair Oaks. And again, we see this as a win-win for the district, and we appreciate consideration of this. This is just to be able to put in an application. It doesn't commit the district to anything. Doesn't commit the district to do it. It doesn't commit the district to come to a long-term agreement with them. All it is, is we have to, per the statute, we have to get permission from our chartering authority to our chartering district to put in the application. That's all this is. If we were to be allocated funds, we would come back to the district. We would negotiate what that would look like. We'd negotiate the lease. So it's not committing anything, the district, to anything. I think there's one more slide. So we're asking the district to approve the agreement. And I think you have a board resolution on for unhoused pupils. I don't know if that is tonight or was at a different meeting. And submit that enrollment projection. And again, as I had said before, if we are awarded funds, it would be subject to negotiation with the district. And as a last thing, I would like to congratulate the superintendent for his pending retirement. When I started, I started at KIP 11 years ago, I think. So right before the superintendent became superintendent. So we've been through a lot over the years, some contentious things, some agreements, you know, back and forth. But he's always been fair, level-headed, really, you know, we work with, we have nine chartering agencies. And so we, or 11 maybe. And Redwood City is like one of the best for sure. So we really appreciate the partnership we've had all these years. So thanks. Any questions?
Thanks, Adam. Thanks for the presentation and the time boards you sent for the superintendent. I'll say thanks on his behalf. I'm sure he'll say things later. Cecilia or David, do you have any, any questions?
I mean, I just want to make sure that I understand because it sounds like today's motion is very low regrets. You get to go and apply, right? And we cross our fingers and hope you get it. So that feels pretty straightforward to go and approve. I'm a little bit more curious about the next chess move on the board. It's like, if you don't get it, very simple, there's no action, nothing to do. If you do get it, you come back. And I would love to understand a little bit more about, like, that you implied a negotiation when you came back. So if we could hit the fast-forward button, let's presume for just a moment, we say yes tonight. You go and apply, you get it, congratulations. What happens next exactly?
Well, depending on the amount of money they were to receive from this, which hasn't been determined. I don't even know if you know what you're applying for yet. We don't. They have a formula that they use based on square footage of like bathrooms and non-bathrooms. They come back to you with a number if you get allocation for it. So then they would, whatever that allocation would be, X amount of dollars, they would determine what projects that they would like to do on their campus. Then they'd come and the negotiation, if you will, would be, do we want them to do those projects on that campus? Or do we want them to alter them or do something completely different? Where we would hopefully come to agreement at that point where they could continue forward with that. But as Adam said, it doesn't obligate the district at this point to move forward. And we do have to be in agreement with the projects that they choose to do if they are awarded this number.
Okay, so walk me through the absolute worst-case scenario. Like, they go and apply, they get it, they come back, and they're like, we have to gold-plate all of our toilets. And we're like, no, that's a terrible idea. And then, like, is there any scenario in which a disagreement there becomes an obligation to the district?
No, if we couldn't come to an agreement, then they would have to forfeit the award.
Okay.
That's right. You have full approval over, over the plans, over the funds, the way the funds are spent. If we say we want to gold-plate the toilets, which I'll now have to take off the list, unfortunately, then you would say no.
Right.
It would, it would require for us to get the funds, a long-term lease for the site. So that is something that would probably, in all honesty, be the one that would potentially be the biggest sticking point.
Because right now, is it five-year at a time? Like, how long is it?
Well, they're through 27.
Yeah, we're through 27 right now.
Extended multi-year through 27. Their charter is up.
Sure, but like, let's assume none of this happened. We would probably be talking about a five-year term, guessing?
That's the maximum we can give their charter authorization.
Okay, got it. And so if they come back and we come to an agreement, like, okay, let's do a bunch of these improvements for the site, and they need now a long-term lease. Does long-term mean the same five years we're talking about here, or something different?
No, I believe it would be the same thing, Adam. If you know something different, please, please. I think, I think a longer-term lease is, and I'm not sure of the exact amount of time, but I think a longer-term lease is required for us to get the funds from the district. I could get back to you on, on that information, but I believe it's longer than five years. And, you know, some districts have policies where they don't have leases longer than five years. I can't remember. I don't think Redwood City is one of those. There are ways sort of around that. If that's the case, you can have, you can have a series of five-year leases that recur. You know, there's ways to do it that fit within the guidelines of the CSFA, you know, to, to give you the grant and the money. But again, all that stuff would be, would have to be negotiated between us if we got.
So I'm just, again, I'm not saying that this is likely, but just, I feel like it's part of my, my job here is to like map out what is the absolute worst-case scenario, even if it's improbable. And it would be that we come to an agreement about, we say yes tonight, you get the award, you come back. We come to an agreement about what to spend the money on. We end up finding some way to go and chain a series of leases that lasts a very long time. Are we talking 10, 20, 30 years? Like, what is long?
I think it might be 30 years.
30 years, okay.
I believe it might be 30, but I don't want to say for sure.
And because everything's rosy now, and then fast forward seven years down the line, things go south, whatever. And now we're regretting that we baked in such an extremely long-term commitment that we don't have a way, clear way out of at that point. Is that a possibility? I'm just trying to map out, like, what are, what is the risk to the district? Obviously, there's no risk tonight. There's more about, like, what happens next?
I mean, I would say that's a risk. I mean, I think that's a risk if you go into any sort of long-term agreement. I think that it's unlikely, and we, you know, we've obviously made investments here to be here for the long run, and we hope to be here forever.
Yeah.
But sure, I would consider that a risk.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to sugarcoat it. I mean, that's, that's something that would have, we'd have to figure out amongst ourselves. I think to the, to that, and I don't know about the 30-year thing. I'll check on that if you will as well, Adam. But any type of extended lease could also have contingencies in there on charter renewal because we can't, you can't.
They always have to, yes. Yeah, that's correct.
Right. So we could say it's a 10, 15-year lease and with a five-year renewable period based on charter renewal.
Okay.
As well. So they would have a lease, but if they don't fulfill the requirements of their charter, or we deny the petition, then it would terminate the lease as well.
I appreciate you all walking me through this. I just, what I don't want to happen is something that seems like an easy decision tonight because this seems like so low risk that, of course, we're going to go and say yes. Becoming an implicit tacit, okay, we are now bound to this 30-year contract that we can't possibly escape, right? And so I just want to put out there for the record, without trying to make a determination we do or don't want to be together working on this for 30 years. Maybe the answer is yes, but like, that's not the decision that we're making tonight. And I want to make sure that the board, when, assuming that you get this, this grant from California, and I hope you do, when you come back, I don't want to have the discussion be that it was implicit that tonight, on September 18th, we kind of already knew what we were getting ourselves into and kind of already tacitly agreed to go and do a 30-year project together.
No, that's, that's fair enough. Yeah, that's, again, this is only just allowing us to file the paperwork.
I get it. There's explicit consent, and what you're asking for is very easy, and there's implicit consent, and that part is a much bigger deal.
Yeah, and my history with Redwood City is, is like, you're not just going to say yes, just like, yeah, sure, go ahead. Okay, that's, that's not going to happen.
Negotiations with our side and their side, our attorneys and their attorneys. So I feel very confident, if they were to get it, that our attorneys would definitely be right beside us, along with yours, and we'd all be at the table hammering this out before we even considered bringing it back to you for approval, for improvement.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Hopefully, that will be under Dr. Baker's tenure before he leaves.
We've had some good meetings.
Yeah. I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Adam, for the presentation. That pretty much covered, covered my questions too. I don't have any questions tonight, but I'm sure I'll have some at the next one, if you get the award. So this is a resolution that we need to approve. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution.
And a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Onto, are we there already? Board and Superintendent Reports. I'm surprised. Who's, Cecilia, do you have anything to report?
No, we didn't. You reported last time.
Okay. David, no? Okay, and then I just have that first RCSD Strategic Resource Alignment Advisory Committee meeting in English was held on Tuesday. I think the first one in Spanish was held the Friday before. And Rick presented the budget and answered a lot of questions. And the committee asked for a lot of data for the next meeting, which I think is sometime in October.
It's October, the 14th.
Also, there is now a summary, a summary of the meeting, and there's the website and along with the slides. The slides and everything because the, the committee members are to go back to school site councils, to go back to PTAs, PTOs, and then we're doing ELACs. And then our district DLAC meeting, we're going to give the updates also. So it's all there, and it's English, Spanish.
I love it.
Yeah, and membership was, obviously, the parents that you were talking about that were there, but we also had staff. Maria was there, Brianna was there. We had a few principals, three principals, so it's a good, good mix of a group. I think 20 people, maybe?
We had like 22.
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't make it. I was. Dr. Baker, anything you can report?
Nope, nope, just that. Yeah.
That's just, okay.
All right, we're on to information. This is 10.1. This is the RCSD Cohesion on its alignment of district priorities. Sisana? Yeah, okay.
Just get this. All right, so, thank you. First of all, I want to first thank my team because this work of this district cohesion really started last year. And we started with sort of bare bones of what we were expecting. And we've definitely come back this year and clearly defined a little bit more explicitly what we are expecting our staff to do in the district. But all of this work that you see on this document, it is, it is due to our coaches, our multilingual department, everyone coming together and really creating this cohesion for the district and making sure that we are sharing our vision, what our expectations are for the district. And all of this is really started because we started looking at MTSS work a long time ago. And the MTSS work really requires that we have certain systems in place. And so that has been some of our driving force, making sure we have these systems in place. And they're all, everybody's clear on what the expectations are. So of course, you know, our goals are really to improve the achievement gap in language arts and reading, as you guys well know, our English learners. And so this is really one of the driving forces, making sure that everybody knows in the district, this is our work to be had, and we've been working on this for the last two years. So really going more in-depth. So we continue with this information at the forefront. We also want to make sure that everyone, our teachers, know that we have clear expectations. And so when you look at CSTP, those are the California Standards for Teaching Profession. We really want to make sure we're emphasizing that everything that we're asking teachers to do is within the guidelines of our teaching profession. And so making sure that our learning goals, our success criteria are communicated to teachers that is very, that they need to know what to expect. We also want to make sure that all instruction and supports are directly linked to what we're doing and that we have learning outcomes at the end. When we're looking at our standard-based lessons, we want to make sure teachers are also providing lesson-designed lessons that are grade-level standards, that are really driven by the standards of California. And then, as you guys know, we've been doing a lot of assessments. And so we're really looking at making sure teachers have an understanding of using how to use formative assessments regularly to drive instruction. So all of these are part of our CSTP standards that we are, we can continue to use, but we just want to highlight this. So as you see, this is how teachers have received it as well. It's not moving. There it goes. So this is just a quick schedule, a quick view of the scheduling, the subject areas for K5. As you can see, we really want to be clear about what is our curriculum, what are we using, how many minutes of the day we're actually asking people to use. So again, just trying to be mindful of what these look like for a school day. Now, a school day is only a certain amount of hours, so we have to really sometimes negotiate and where are we doing certain things, how we're doing it, how much time we're spending. But this is, these are our requirements. This slide here, just reviews our EL blocks. We have for K5, we have a 90-minute block that we want all teachers. And this, this block is super important because it is creating the foundational skills, targeted groupings, reading and writing. It's really an essential block that we really want teachers to know that in order for us to really have students reading at where we need them to be at grade level, they need, we need to provide them the time. And so the 90-minute blocks are there, and then we just go over 30, 30, 30. This is just a guideline. Sometimes those 30, 30, 30 or less, depending on what the student needs. But the driving forces the student needs and the classrooms that will drive how the schedule works. In our language arts block, as you can see, it is multifaceted. It requires lots of different key structures and supports for student learning. Not only are we looking at our foundational reading and comprehension, but we're also looking at systematic phonics. What are we doing? And we have that in place, which we didn't have a couple of years ago. We continue to work on vocabulary development, and that's across the, across the way for us, specifically for our English learning, creating background knowledge, looking at our fluency practice, and of course, our reading comprehension, which are reading to learn. All of these skills really come together to how build strong, proficient readers. So we have put into place many of these systems in the last three years, a little bit more systematically. And we're now starting to see, you know, And we're now starting to see, you know, we're starting to see our students really start to take off a little bit more on those foundational skills. So part of our focus issue is now we're starting to move towards comprehension. That's the work next that we have to really work on. So again, we continue to build upon what we have been putting into place. For our tier goal in language arts, again, writing is not just a left behind. We really want to make sure we are, reading and writing are essential components in language arts. There isn't a lot of writing programs out there, so we have continued to use what we have. And we have teachers who have different trainings. We know this is an area for the district that we need to work on. But when we research writing, it's really hard to find a curriculum that's very, that's not just, but how do I say it? The old, the system is they used to have, I don't know, I was never trained in the, in the right type of writing process, but they had green, red and blue or three colors and you had to have details. So people talk about the hamburger structure. So it's just, and you limit kids at it. So we really want to really look at more traditional writing. But our standard state, we have to teach narrative, opinion and informational. So that is very clear in the standards. We have clear guidelines, we have rubrics, we have protocols. We're really working with our teachers to really learn how to use those rubrics and, and embed it into their practices. In fact, a lot of our PLC work, many principals want to work on writing at their sites. And so really looking at, making sure we're providing students the access to be able to communicate in those three areas. Writing is a big component of our standards in our state test. They have to be explained. So this is an area in which we really are focusing on. And at least last year, this is one of our focuses that came about through one of our PLCs. Okay, so again, we continue to assess. We have become very much more assess, data-driven in terms of looking at our assessments. And we continue to look at that data so that we can provide intervention, targeted interventions for our students as well as enrichment. So all of these facets are really part of the components of language arts. It is a lot of information that we have to provide for our students, but it is work that we're doing. And we really are working towards making them become readers and writers, proficient readers and writers. So for middle school, again, very similar when you look at our schedules, our language arts schedule. These are very similar to what we're doing in the elementary K-5. So some of these practices are in the same. So you can see our content standards, I mean, our ELA, what curriculum we're using for history and social studies and then science. So those are our three areas and content that we look for. And so this year, a lot of the work that we've been trying to work on and some of the training we have is bringing our history, social studies and science teachers into the world of reading comprehension, because there's a lot of reading in that area. So we've been, we did some training at the beginning of the year with that, so that now they're more in sync about what are some of the structures they need to, they need to put into play and to practice with the students, so that they're able to read the content. So again, we're really working on those key elements. For math, as you guys know, last spring, we went, became a K-8 math, imaginary, IM math. And so now we have, this is what you'll look at, just a quick snapshot of what it looks like from K to eighth grade now. Everybody's about a 60-minute block. Of course, middle school with their schedules, it's probably between 50 and six, less about 50 minutes. So again, these are just giving you a quick snapshot of what it needs to look like in terms of a day. The centers, where do, where do centers begin? Where do they end? They don't exist in middle school. And then what is it looking at for in terms of lessons? Again, you guys learned about this yesterday, that our new math program is a problem-based learning approach. Where really we want students to engage in the critical thinking independently. So if you look at gradual releases, what probably all of us were taught when we went to school, problem-based is really allowing our students to engage in the thinking first, then collaborating with peers. And then teachers are finally synthesizing the learning at the end. So it's, for example, they may be given a fraction problem where they're exploring real-world problems and then they're dividing, you know, cooking into a certain amount of ingredients. They have to figure out how to do the measurements. And then they come back and discuss in the groups how they came up with their responses. So it's having the children actually do it first before we give them the algorithm or the how-to. And then we come back and have them, have a discussion and consolidate their learning, looking at what are they, what were the, some of the misconceptions that they tried and didn't work? Well, how are we connected to the broader mathematical? So these, this is huge for our teachers, as if they've learned to teach this way. Because again, we all learned in the gradual release model, even as teachers ourselves. So it is a change of practice for our teachers. Once again, this is just our lesson structure. You can see that there's warm-up activities, that typical structure, which usually lasts about 10 minutes. You move into the activities, which is more of the exploration part, where their teacher may be giving them a problem. Students are then trying to figure out how to, in groups, and then they come back together and this synthesis. So a lot of this is just within this, this is within the 60 minutes. So these lesson, the cooldowns are really formative assessments that they check in every single day. So every day, teachers are checking to see what did the students learn. So our math program has built-in checkpoints for math. This slide just shows you the different phases of the learning in a typical lesson. What, what is a warm-up? How are instructional activities sequenced? The lessons at this end, the cooldown, just a little bit more of information of what we are asking teachers to do. As again, this requires a lot of thinking and a lot of work on the sides of the teacher to try to figure out how to make sure they're answering the students in a way, supporting students' critical thinking skills. Because we're, we're not giving them the answer first like we used to. So this really is, there are five practices that we want teachers to practice, which are anticipate what the students are going to do, monitor what they're doing, select how they're going to respond, and then think about sequencing and making connections to the real world. So all of that goes, happen in a lesson. So it's a lot of different mindsets of what we're trying to do in math. And just to share a little tidbit, I was at a site the other day, got to see them using vocabulary in action for the first time in a fifth grade class. It was great to see students really engaging in the mathematical thinking and the vocabulary and understanding what was being asked of them. So it's a, it's a great, it was great to see that for the first time in a couple of years. So we also provide some supplemental mathematic practices. And for K-1, it's Khan Academy. This is all, this is just fluency practice, reinforcing skills and practicing independently. We also have another app for Reflex and Frax, which is for second through eighth grade. This supplemental Reflex and Frax really practices on adapting their mathematical thinking. Basic math facts for Reflex, well, second grade, real-time feedback. So it's automatically addition, subtraction, multiplication, addition. Again, it's just fluency practices. But Frax is the conceptual part of fractions, which are very difficult for students, but this gives them the practice online. And it allows the students to really gain some confidence in their mathematical skills. So again, this just is a little breakdown. Reflex, practice and mastery of addition and subtraction facts. Frax introduction, introduction to basic fraction concepts and visuals, visual models. Fourth and fifth grade is mastery of multiplication and division. Frax, building fluency with fractions, including equivalency and comparison. And if you think back to when you were in school, you were probably doing fractions mostly in middle school. So we are now doing them more in elementary school. So again, the concepts have come down to the lower grades are really trying to help support the students, because fractions are not easy to do and teach. And then in sixth grade, again, ongoing practice and maintain automaticity of basic facts. And then working on advanced fraction operations, decimals and problem-solving skills. So we don't leave behind our social studies and science in the, in the K-5. Social studies and sciences are an integral part of our learning and it is built in into an integrated units for our K-5. So you can see in the top purple and the green, that's how, that's a schedule for a grade level where we have our theme, thematic themes based on, that are aligned with our benchmark. And so you'll see caring and community, which is a social studies. And then we go into a science traits and survival, that's a science unit. So in each of the grade levels, there's three science units that we do with FOS. So it's three and then three social studies units that are done. So making sure we're trying to hit all the standards. So they may do reading in, in a benchmark, but the integrated unit, they may be working on background knowledge to help them access the core curriculum and access and actually wanting them to do the hands-on FOS kits as well. So we're, this, this year, we're really trying to emphasize some of the hands-on activities to bring FOS to life a little bit more into our integrated unit. So our teachers, third, fourth, fifth, fourth and fifth graders really were, are to begin, are started the year with FOS this year. And we had some training at the beginning of the year for that. Moving into our next slide, we're now, we're starting to talk about our supports. What supports do we have in place for our students? So we have our Tier Two supports, which really are targeted interventions and for small groups and looking at what do we need to, how do we identify them? We're really trying to look at closing the gaps or we're assessing the students and figuring out where are the struggles. We're using different curriculums for, and approaches for our students who have phonics skills. We need to provide different scaffolds for those who have, for reading, for reading comprehension. And we're also looking at different collaborative practices. And in math, we're also looking at what do we need to do in our maths group? So math, part of the math block have center time. When students are working on centers, teachers should be pulling small groups so that they are looking at how to make sure they're cementing those practice skills that students are needing. So looking at for our English learners, actually teaching academic vocabulary as well, making sure we're embedding all of that vocabulary and making it real. And then we have our Tier Three, which are most intensive supports for our students who are really struggling. Again, some of them have academic, we have to create an academic intervention plans. Many times that is with the smaller group, instead of a group of five, maybe a group of two that, that need more support. And then we also provide additional tutoring in small groups as well for some of our students. And some of our sites have after-school tutoring as well. So one of our biggest emphasis in the last two years has really been moving towards this grade-level goal collaboration. Working together is really important for us as we are moving into our professional learning communities. We continue to roll that out. And so this year, our first PLC is going to be September 29th, where we're rolling out that first cycle of, cycle for the year. And so really, we're wanting to make sure that teachers understand that we need to work together to build the knowledge and bounce ideas off each other as we can support each other when kids are struggling. And also looking at enrichment too. What do we do for provider enrichment for the students who already have the standard, already have met the goals? So really trying to get them to really think about that differentiation for at all levels. And then really, really actually wanting to actually make sure we're strengthening what is happening in our Tier One instruction, our day-to-day. What is, what strategies are teachers using so that they can support each other? What is it that they're doing to come up with common planning assessments and progress monitoring? So all of this is part of our PLC work that we're really rolling out this year in a different way than we did last year. We started last year with data, getting them grounded in data. And this year, we're working on the collaborative piece with them. So that starts on the 29th. And so let's not forget, all our work that we've been doing with our designated ELD. Again, these are our non-negotiables. It was really important for us to really provide non-negotiable things that, for our students. So we want to be very clear what we're using, what curriculum we're using for designated ELD, that it has to be done. You have to have the minutes in. And that we, our focus is how it does really English work during this time. We want to make sure that we're providing supports, different language functions for writing, making sure students are actually talking. How do we integrate technology into this? So really get, providing a lot of differentiation for our students to access. And we've done a lot of work. Catherine goes around and monitors a lot of our designated ELD consistently, really making sure that we are doing, we're, we are providing ELD for all of our students. And so it's super important and we've seen the good results when people do it from last year. So again, for ELD, these are not, this is a non-negotiable, with really making sure that this is in every schedule. So Catherine really works on making sure every student in our, that is an identified English learner, has this block of time. This year, we, and it should have been from the, it is start from day one. We can't wait till September 30th. It has to start from day one for our students. And again, you guys are familiar with Language Power and we're continuing with our Outback Practice. There are all these kits that we have. And this year, we're rolling out assessments now. So last year, we were still working on the curriculum. This year, we're working on some assessments. And we're also looking into a new system of assessments that Catherine's piloting now. So we're looking into a whole new system, but we're losing, using a little bit of both. So we're hoping to be able to have something more in play that will be easier and faster for teachers. Again, non-negotiable for middle school, exactly what we're expecting, their blocks of time, what they're doing. These are required, these are requirements that we have. And so making sure that the one most difficult issue that we have in middle school is how do we do intervention in a 50, 50-minute block or enrichment? So principals are becoming, we have some principals who've been able to create some intervention blocks at the same time that they're doing other things. So principals are becoming in the middle school, looking at how can we provide this for smaller group kids? And some schools are making it work. So it is not an easy task in the middle school to provide a separate period for, especially when you have a six, a six-block period or seven. So they are being very creative on how to help support our students. Again, a non-negotiable is our PE minutes. We are required, so we make sure we made this front and some bit clear that everyone has to have it. And then of course, as you know, our district assessments. As you can see, these are all the different assessments we do over the period of the year. We have really come into this year, making sure that teachers are using the math unit task this year and continue to use all of our other assessments that we've been using in the past. And this year, what's new in I Ready, we now have a Spanish language assessment. So we just completed that assessment for all our Spanish, our Spanish classrooms that are being taught in Spanish. So Jenny will have some data for us, some Haster to compile that data for our Spanish, because we haven't had that in the past. And of course, we have our learner framework. This really is making sure that all of our students have opportunities to be empowered, to make sure they're constructing knowledge and collaborating and making sure they're able to communicate effectively. This is one of our goals. It's been there for a while. We've had this goal for a long time, but we really want them to be able to engage in all of these skills. And so one of the things that we have, our staff development has, and you guys, the link is on it, is our staff development website. So this is where teachers can access all of our curriculum as well. And anything that is developed by the staff development is posted on this website for teachers to have access to. So all of our planning tools are on this website. As you know, we're in the midst, we're in the middle, one more day of goal-setting conferences. As we're closing out, it came a little bit earlier this year. And so again, we continue to focus on our students' goals, having them, create them and share out with, with, with the parents and also looking at the reflection cycles after each trimester. So it's important that we continue the work as students continue to move towards creating those goals. So we had a lot of, a good work last year. So again, what it looks like for TK two through six, eight is a little different. Everyone's, does them in the fall, but there's always ongoing opportunities through the, through the, through the trimesters to actually continue doing and reporting to families. We just don't have conferences at trimester one or only in trimester three, sec, two. So we continue to need supports for social, emotional learning. This continues to be a very integral part as we have come out of pandemic. So we have our schools who are adopted our Wayfinder this year. Not all the schools. We also have some schools who continue with SEL programs that are really good, that they have been working really well. So they decided they wanted to stay with theirs. So some of them are Second Step, Camoches. There's a number of them, but they have been working out those sites. Sites that are doing Wayfinder are the ones that are noted up here. They were literally seeking something different. So that's a new rollout this year. So going into our MTSS work, we, as you know, we have moved into our database, which are Power School Analytics. Well, now we're looking at our Power School Behavior. This really, it goes aligned with our PBIS work. So it's just an online portal, similar to Class Dojo, where children are recognized for positive behaviors. You know, so it's the same thing, but this one is tied to actually, to our system, our Power School system. So we have some, some schools who've rolled it out already and. So um we have some, some schools who've rolled it out already and some that are others that are getting ready to roll it out. Um, and some that have been doing one of s- something similar to this that they like. So we let them continue because they have that. But this one's just nice because we try, we can track behaviors, they can put in a behavior. We can actually track how many time a student has had issues and they can, we, they can have a conference. It just is a tracking system that allows us, but it really focuses on catching students doing PBIS, catching them being good. So I, one of the school sites, we were told that the, that students were like, what happened to my points? So they're really being cognizant as they can see their points. You know, all kids want to do well. So this is just a different way of rewarding them. And so some of them are tied to their student stores. So the more that they are positive, the more they have points to use at the store. So again, on our professional development this year, we continue with our PLC meetings. Um, this year focusing on our English learner strategies and ELA and math. We continue to track their progress in language arts and content. We're using all of our data that we've been using as teachers um in our PLC work. Um, and then we continue doing our targeted sites with instructional coaching and observation cycles. So this year we have uh three sites that are doing this observation uh cycles with Dr. Sagulon. So what that looks like at Hoover, Roosevelt and MIT, and our cycle begins next week. So teachers will be planning a lesson and then with Dr. Sire and our coaches. And then another day they will be, they will be teaching the lesson and their peers are observing them. And they're giving each other feedback and debriefs. So we're hoping that well, there will be uh three cycles this year that the teachers are would are starting. So we're starting next week at Roosevelt and Hoover. Um, and so we're excited to see that. We started a little bit of that last year and it went really well. So we wanted to continue that work. Um, and let me just go back. We don't have, um, I just realized I didn't put Taft and Garfield on there because they're still, they're doing the new benchmark. And so their work is tied into all the new benchmark materials and planning around that. So again, for accountability, we are continuing with our SMART goals through our PLC cycles. We, as the district leadership, continue with walkthroughs and observation, providing support for our leaders. And we continue with goal setting and our data collection. So we continue to monitor all of that. So for RSD, just so you know, this is our PLC timeline. So you can see we have a lot happening um for our PLC work. And we, the green areas, or those are called progress monitoring. So those are checkpoints sort of in the middle that we're going to see where we're at. But the pink sections, November nineteenth and twenty eighth, that is sort of where we see our closing our cycles. And so this year we are part, uh, Solutions Tree has been working with us. And so we're now creating long-term goals versus short-term goals. So there's a long-term goal for the end of the year, what we want students to accomplish. And then we have checkpoints, what I want done by November nineteenth, what I want done by January, I think. So there's checkpoints throughout the year, shorter term. So that's going to be part of the work we're doing on the twenty ninth. And principals are leading that work. Um, so this is just some of the professional development we had at the beginning of the year. It was a quite a bit for, we had our dyslexia screener in August. Our first screener is going to occur in October, it's coming up. Um, we had our reading comprehension for K two, three, five and six, eight. History and social studies also did reading comprehension with Berkeley. Um, we did some writing in K two with Benchmark, FOST for three, five, we had our math centers. And one of the new things were happening this year, we're actually forming a bilingual committee to look at our bilingual programs. Um, and, and we started that already. And then for middle school, again, expository reading and writing, um, we had that happening. That was a four-day training. History and social studies, uh, I said with CRLP, and then we had our, we have our new math curriculum that will be ongoing. So a lot happening in terms of PD this year at the beginning of the year. For our administrators, we also have um professional development occurring. So we are continuing with our educational rounds like we started last year. We are giving them ongoing feedback and they're giving teachers ongoing feedback as well. Um, they have now established teachers as doing goal setting with principals as well. Um, and then we have partnered with Solutions Tree Training, who is deepening our understanding of professional learning. So we have a series of four cycles with them. And then we have Dr. Sagulon, who's working with our administrators on English and a roadmap in the EL framework. So this is all for our principals to help guide the work we're doing and focus. So any questions?
Thank you. Lots of information there. Uh, what's, I mean, a lot going on at school. Um, Cecilia, David, do either of you have questions or comments?
Um, thank you. Definitely a lot of information. Um, I'm just curious to know if um like how are teachers adapting to like the new curriculum? I know that the people that piloted were, you know, they knew how it worked, but the teachers that were used to doing the old way math, for example. Um, so I'll stop there so you can answer.
Um, I were in our going into our, versus our third year with the math. So I think in our third year, we still have teachers who are struggling. And we have some teachers who've already jumped on board and really have been real consistent with the math um challenges. So I think it's across the board. Um, we haven't done a survey. We did a survey the first year quite consistently along the year as we were rolling it out to find out what were the needs. Um, but we haven't done a survey for math this year in regards about how they're feeling about it. We do know um that principals are also monitoring it more this year about making sure the curriculum's being done and that we're going to do it with fidelity. It is important. A math program can only be as good as we do it, right? As we build it and there are learning areas that teachers need, but we also have to be able to provide them support. So we have had, um, Anastasia was really a lot in classrooms the last couple of years. Um, modeling lessons, you know, planning with teachers, it does take planning. Um, and so really we need to, I think what we're at now, we need more dedicated time for planning for it. We're at the point now where they know the curriculum. Now we just have to plan to deepen the learning for the teachers and to making sure that it's moving along how it needs to be. Because we're in our third year. We just don't have enough math coaches is the problem.
And so Cecilia, when we started with this, I don't know if you remember, um, there was a lot of discussion and concern about the math program. Do you remember when principals were doing their reports? And they said this was just too much, they couldn't do it. Well, it's come to a point now with the trainings and then also with this, this cohesion model that, you know, this is to be taught, this is district curriculum, is to be taught to fidelity. That means you use nothing else. This is the requirement. The principals are on the same page with us. And so you may have difficulties, we will support you, but we're not going backwards and picking up something else that we were using previously. And Anna's been very good about saying, no, put that away. We cannot use that. We have this material, this is what we're using, we have these assessments. These are the assessments we are going to use and determine our next steps, but we're not going back and using something else or using some type of teacher-created material. You know, but during, during COVID, there was teacher-created material that, that you could buy and all that. No, no, no. This is what we're doing. It's to fidelity for our math and our language arts and our mo, for our multilingual learners with language power. That is what we're doing. You saw the schedules here, which we had some difficulties with the schedules, but everybody's doing them. I know, and we're checking when we go out because we want to see the schedules and we go into the classrooms. And if it's not, we say, ask the principal, what happened here?
Yeah, I, there was a lot of, I think we're monitoring a lot more. I think one of the biggest things that I hear from teachers is they want more fluency.
Yeah.
Fluency, fluency, fluency. Kids still need to learn their basic facts, right? Part of the, in the math program, um, the most important part are for the younger kids is the centers. The centers is where they build that fluency. So if teachers aren't doing the centers, they're missing the practice where students need to practice the skills. Um, because the fluency is part of rote memorization, right? They need to practice.
So when you say the centers.
So in kinder and kinder, uh, kinder through, through fifth grade, there are, we, the program has centers where you provide um an extra thirty minutes. Kindergarten is built in, so they have sixty minutes, it's the lesson, and then they have the centers where it's a game, it's like gamified, right? They're practicing, looking, counting, and so that's embedded in K one. Second, third, fourth and fifth grade, you have to add a thirty minutes. So it's, so it's an hour block and then you have to add thirty minutes, two to three times a week, so they can practice the fluency skills. And on top of that, we also have um the online reflexive facts and count to actually practice some of those skills. So we do have them and the, the centers, because they require a lot of prep work, right? We want, this year, that's why we started with K one two, making sure, we started with them prepping all the centers for the beginning of the year. So there was no excuse, we don't have them. We have, we gave it that, gave them time to create them and making sure they're ready to go. So we really are trying to emphasize in math, you have to do the centers. We know it takes time to prep them, so we're giving them time during PDs to do the work. Um, because it, we want them to be able to collaborate with each other as well and, you know, play the games. US teachers have to play the games, um, so that that is embedded, so that builds that fluency practice. And the math um also has extensions, so you can have students who are, you know, fluent. They can play some other games that are, are gonna, and challenge them. And then we have some that need supports that you can adapt to the lower grade. So they're in this, in the mathematic um sequence, they have those things. Teachers need to be able to go and look for the resources. So that has been some of the challenges we're still working on and still trying to work with teachers on understanding everything that the, the package provides. Because the first year, you're, you're rolling it out and then we're trying to embed what else is available to the teachers. This year, we're really trying to get those math assessments because there are assessments online and then there are assessments that you can do on paper and you have to score. So we're really trying to have them move at least third through up to into the online systems because it's scored for them. You just have to do the writing portion, so you can automatically see what kids are doing quicker in an assessment than having to sit there and correct one by one. So that's one of our focuses this year is those assessments.
Thank you. Um, and I guess I, I'd like to say obviously thank you to all the teachers for doing a great um job. And obviously, whether it's challenge, challenging for some, I'm sure they'll get through it. And the satisfaction of seeing the students um thrive would, you know, make them feel better. Um, and then my other question, as you mentioned, there were some after-school tutoring. I'm wondering, is that an option or is that a mandatory thing?
So for our tutoring, we have it at specific sites. Our target sites have all after-school tutor. We have for foundational skills, we have air reading. And so those are students that we choose who are in the after-school program and that are two to three years behind. And then we have math tutoring at CAP tutoring for some of the sites too. So we have math at those, our target sites as well as air reading. Which are found, which really works on foundational skills. So it's another dosage for students who are struggling in phonics. Um, but it's an online tutoring we've been using and then we, last year we got really good results with them, of moving kids, of kids moving um levels with that phonics.
Now, is that necessarily after-school tutoring, obviously different than like the after-school programs or is that embedded?
It's embedded in the after-school programs.
Okay.
Yeah, we've worked with the after-school programs to, for those blocks of time to make sure we're having it, yeah. We wish, one of our challenges is we have students who really need tutoring but are not in the after-school program and how do we provide that with them when you have to have an adult with them for some of them? So that's been the biggest challenge. And we do have kids who need tutoring that are not in the after-school program that would qualify for some of these supports. We just don't have a system in place for how do we keep them there for the thirty minutes? Because sometimes the program may not start till three thirty or, you know, later. Um, CAP tutoring actually goes from, you know, all afternoon, so they pull kids out and for half an hour. How do you keep a child there that gets out at two thirty and their session isn't till four o'clock? So you have to have, create a system to have them there if they're not in the after-school program. That's been one of our challenges.
David?
I think this is great stuff. Um, I feel like the, the district's worked really hard to source high-quality pedagogy, high-quality materials uh, and standards for instruction and now needs to make sure that they're rigorously applied, right? That the students are actually receiving the benefit of that curriculum and of that pedagogy. Uh, and I, I feel like this is a, a good step in that direction of saying, hey, folks, th- this is what we're all going to be doing. Um, you know, this is the, this is the game plan going forward. And there's, there's a lot in here that seems very well researched. Um, yeah, I, I think a focus on writing, you know, there's increasing evidence that writing itself is a critical part of thinking. And so encouraging children to do more writing is really good. Dr. Baker and I have had conversations about, you know, whole book reading assignments versus assigning um summaries or excerpts uh, being really important. And then I think the meta-cognitive pro- process of, of starting with kind of capturing the confusion of having the students a- attempt to solve it their own, figure out some parts, but realize that they haven't got it all figured out and are going to need a little bit of help. Um, then, then they've got an itch to go and scratch and the t- teacher helps them go and scratch that itch. Uh, is, is actually well-backed by um pedagogical studies. Aldrich and Tenenbaum, twenty eleven, uh, Hattie Invisible Learning also calls out scaffolded learning is outperforming explicit teaching. So, you know, sometimes things change uh about like how instruction works. And it's like, it, it feels like just change for change's sake, like, oh, great, another thing. And sometimes it changes like for concretely the better and there's like solid science behind it. And this feels like it's in the latter category, um, which I feel really good about. Um, I'm also really happy to see just the continued leaning into more feedback, more observations happening from administrators. Um, I'd, you know, love to continue pushing on like more uh peer teaching observations and opportunities there. Um, setting aside the time for professional development for uh not just teachers, but also the administrators and helping the administrators get better at, helping the teachers get better, you know, per- percolating all the way down. So I know a lot of work has gone into making that happen. A lot of work has gone into helping make sure that the principals actually have time to give that feedback uh, and to get them out of the office from some of the other administrative duties, you know, into that um process of helping the teachers be excellent, because that is how our students are going to achieve. So yeah, I think it's, it's bold. There's a degree to which, you know, I could see parts of this being controversial that like we're laying down the law. This is the way our kids will be instructed, but I think that kind of level of rigor is what our, our students deserve. And we are gonna see positive educational outcomes from applying high-quality pedagogy consistently across the district. And that's what I see in this plan.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I'm gonna use this, just to ask a couple of questions to educate myself on some of the practices that you mentioned. Um, for fluency practice, you said choral reading and readers theater? I don't know what those are. Could you tell?
So, so choral reading is, it just like a lot of our practice for English learners really, um. So choral reading is sometimes we do it together instead of just a child doing it by themselves. Um, readers theater is like, it's just like a play, but it's just reading it and they're, you know, using their voice intonation. So it's, it's, you know, there may be a script and children have different parts. And it's really actually readers have been shown to prove really helpful for our English learners and our students with disabilities.
Oh, great.
Um, it's actually built into our uh benchmark.
Okay.
It needs to be used a little bit more, but it really does help our students get into those roles um, of, of understanding and supporting.
Okay.
Uh, it's, yeah, it's great practice.
Nice. Yeah, that sounds fun. Um, and then the targeted interventions, there was a collaborative practice, um, reciprocal teaching. I mean, I'm guessing what that is, but I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's just the practice of having, you know, students work together, but also teachers working together to have that practice.
Yeah, okay.
It's a whole needs and it really does become when students become teachers themselves.
Okay.
And you really want to get to that point.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's great. Um, you, I think for putting the spotlight onto writing. Uh, I think that was really interesting to hear about your perspective on it and sort of what we're doing there. Uh, kind of made me think that maybe we're a little bit not looking at it at directly at the academic indicator that the board is looking at. Like, I'm sure it shows up indirectly through reading comprehension and some of the other academic indicators that we're looking at, but we're, we're not, right? Like, we don't have anything in our dashboards or anything that we're coming.
No, because writing is embedded in through our, the writing of the assess, you know, the reading component of.
Right.
It's justifying citing your evidence and reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it does, it's really the reading comprehension is part of the way that we should see the input.
Are there other ways that we can and should be measuring like writing proficiency?
Yeah, so I was asking, I just wasn't sure.
Well, I think, I think that years ago, years, years ago, and I, I'll include myself, I was trained in the writing, readers and writer workshop where it was a little bit more open-ended. Um, and we, I mean, I learned a lot of good skills, a lot of how to coach students, how to really um have an, you know, have a one-on-one meeting. It wasn't about correcting, it was about how to add details, how to add, ask questions, probing questions to add in more information. It did take a lot of training. Um, it was using text as models, lessons and children mimicking what was in the text. So you had what's called mentor tax. Many of our teachers that were trained in that era, in that era, back in many, many years ago, really So you had what's called mentor tax. Many of our teachers that were trained in that era, in that era, back in many, many years ago, really continued. Those were good practices. You try to find good literature practices, good models for students, and you replicate that so students understand the writing process, right? Um, I think with our new initiative, because back in then, we did, we had narrative opinion and fa- ma- and opinion was a little different. And informational, there were different texts that we used to use. And now that we're very specific with, we must teach narrative, we must teach opinion, because opinion becomes argumentative in the middle schools. And then informational. So those genres are really what is our driver to making sure that children know how to explain. So like, for example, on our, all our testing, even on our L P A test for English learners, children have to state their opinion, and they have to justify it with three reasons. They have to look at a citing of a text, and then have to pull the text information, the graphic organizer, and they have to put it into full sentences. So looking at an animal and its description, now you have to go put it into writing and putting in a piece together. The same goes for um our informational texts when we're, you know, trying to cite evidence from a text. Where am I citing it from? You know, this paragraph here, you know, you're citing evidence, you're then providing your own um supporting evidence as to why you think that. Right? So all of that is part of the new, of what isn't, what they're being tested on. Um, narrative has been around for years. I mean, I, I, narrative, it, it, I think, and narrative, I think, is one of the harder ones for our kids because we think narrative tell our own stories. When you're going into a piece of writing, they're actually giving you the story starter and you gotta continue it. So if you don't have background knowledge on whatever they gave you, it's gonna be a harder take. But it's, again, it's all about fictional narrative. Kids love fictional narratives. They can, you know, they can make those things up. I think it's, so there's a lot of variety of it. I think we've lost the art of it a little bit in, in what we do, and then we gotta go back. But we are working towards making that in kindergarten. We're having more interactive and shared writing experiences so that they can then become more collaborative as they move up the grade levels and giving them that experiment. Um, the writing daily is important.
Yeah, and we pretty much consistently see student writing up on the walls in classrooms, you know, going visits, you know, it's happening. I guess what I was wondering was, I don't think that the, um, I don't think I Ready has a metric on writing, nor does, nor does CASP, right? And those are kind of like the two major.
Because the embedded writing is the, yeah, CASP does have writing. Um, and I think that's been one of the drivers of the F I Bs, which are, you know, CASP-like. Because it's showing us that children can't explain their thinking in a cohesive way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Um, the, the other one I was wondering was, um, and, and this is no knock on pulling in supplemental materials, but I was just wondering what, like, what is missing in I M that uh we felt the need that we had to go out and get supplemental programs?
We didn't know what was the need, but we were trying to address the teachers who wanted making sure that we have, we were addressing the needs.
Okay, cool.
At, at the time when we got it, we knew, we didn't know what was needed.
Okay.
Um, we knew, heard from principals, and we heard from teachers, there's just not enough of that. So we went and got two apps that have that so that they can at least practice.
Yeah, I know. I think it's great, like, more practice is good. I just wasn't sure if it was like a gap in the curriculum that we had adopted.
According to I M.
Okay.
If we, we, if they teach the structure, it's supposed to be built into it.
I got it, okay. Um, then the, the last sort of like mini, mini question is, uh, just, and the designated E L D being non-negotiable time? That's a district requirement, like, the P E is state, right? Like, it's like the only thing that they mandate. Oh, they do mandate that, too. Okay.
Actually, state mandate.
Okay, great, okay.
Were we following it? Probably not to the T.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, but it is state mandated. It's always been state mandated.
Those the only two time blocks that the state mandates, P E and designated E L D?
Well, the different, no, all of them, yeah, that, that are state-driven, that we are looked for, yes, I think so. But we all have our minutes of time by curriculum.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess you already kind of talked about this, but I just want to make sure I understood it, like, it's awesome to have this cohesive plan, but is it being, is it cohesive? Like, are people adopting it? It sounds like there's a good foundation of adoption, but there's still like a little bit of like unevenness around.
There is unevenness, but we are out there. You, this is something we are going to follow. If we don't follow it, because we put, a lot of time was spent on looking at the research, a lot of time was spent at having consultants with us. And then the time spent that Anna and her team put together to make this happen. So I know, I know it can be a lot, but if we don't go in this direction, we don't expect it happening, right, it's not gonna work.
Right, right.
And so we are very adamant, we're gonna have it work.
And, and our, our, really, our, our goal is really to have professional learning communities.
Which we're.
The da- the things really happening regularly. In order for that to happen, we, as teachers, have to be on the same page about what we're doing. So if I'm using this book and you're using that book, there is sometimes we're not, me not being connect. How are we make, moving forward? So part of our goal, really, in the M T S, and actually in M T S S, it is having things that are aligned so that we can have deep conversations about how do we move student work forward in our conversations as a grade level? Or in our content math area, how are we looking at student work and how are we moving the kids' work forward? Um, not looking just at their deficiencies, we need to look at the enrichment. We need to strive to have all kids reach the enrichment area. And so if we can't have those conversations because we're on the different pages, we're missing the opportunities to collaborate. And so I think our push really is to get teachers on board. What, what we have found, find, what we have, can't even talk right now. What we have found is the schools that we see a lot of collaboration happening are schools that are really moving the needle.
Yeah.
Right? So we want that in all of our schools. We want all schools to see the value of how we can support each other. That we are not just, I don't have all the answers, nor do you, but together we can be a power team by sharing what we're doing and really using it to, to our benefit. How do we address the kids' needs, right? So, and then, and it, it is a, a good practice to have, and then having them come in together and just look at their data, but highlight what is working great in our classrooms, and then where do we need to work on together as a team? And so that's part of the wor- work that we're doing with professional learning communities, is deepening that work this year. So that next year, we're hoping it's more of a cyclical, from day one, they start with this mindset. We're doing this collaborative, we're looking at data, we're planning together so that we can move the bar with the students and help us, all of our students meet the need.
They learn from one another also, you know, how did you get that child to do that task? How did that work? How did, what did you do that I should do, that I can do that with my kids? So that collaboration is very important. Or can I come into your classroom and watch while, you know, the guest teacher is in mine, you know, and, and see you do it? So I think, I, I believe we, I really believe we are on the right track, and we cannot let this go. So we're very adamant, only when we're at the school sites, we're very adamant and principals, and, yeah, we know, we know.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and this tremendous effort, I know, that it is to bring this coherence to like so many schools and so many grade levels.
And people are working, the people are working hard. I, I, I was, they are working very hard to, to get this off the ground and moving. And um, as the principals have told them, you need, I need to know what support you need. So if I can't provide it, I can find who can in the district provide it for us. So, um,
Yeah.
It, it, I, I, I'm thrilled that we have it, and I know it's going to work. We just need to keep on, keep on it.
Yeah, it makes sense, because this, I think, I would imagine that this kind of alignment just really will ensure that, you know, a student start can have wildly different experiences based upon which school they go to. Obviously, there's different needs at different schools, and can be adapted for that.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah.
And that, and that's some of the things that we have, we do have students who've moved around different sites, and, and they, they, oh, we already did that or not. So we're really trying to make sure that, that system is a place. Uh, so, yeah.
Well, that's great. I mean, talk about work that connects directly to our mission, you know, it's like, this is perfect, so, uh, uh, thanks. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just want to thank Anna and the team for really putting this together. And I know we went through a lot of P D with the principals prior, right, when school ended, and then we started right back up when they came, and then did the same with the teachers. So, um, great job. I, I am really looking forward to this, just moving the needle, really.
Awesome, thanks. Um, let's move on to correspondence, uh, which is item eleven. Uh, anyone have correspondence? I got one email today that was from uh the San Mateo County Office of Education. They reviewed our twenty-five, twenty-six L cap and our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. They approved the L cap, congratulations. Um, and they confirmed that the budget meets the requirements. So, uh, I think that's good. Not surprisingly, they did flag the deficit spending um, being short-term covered by the transfers in, uh, long-term by unidentified fiscal stabilization measures, but I don't know, it's all there. Okay. Other business suggested items for future agenda? Yeah, uh, Board of Trustees' meeting calendar? Solid closed session.
Yes, so just confirming that there is a closed session on October eighth, starting at six twenty. That way you guys have thirty minutes in case you have any questions since it's a new process. And then, uh, the ten sixteen study session, October sixteenth, study session at six.
Okay. A- and the one thing I kind of wanted to ask was that, um, I know that the October eighth meeting, we're gonna have leadership associates there, they want like a long two-hour block or so. I mean, is there a possibility to start earlier?
Yeah, that's where exactly where I was going.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know.
We can start early, they uh find out with leadership and associates helps early they can get here for the closed session that they want to have with you, and let's work, yeah, work with that timeframe. And maybe we could start at six as opposed.
Yeah, yeah, or something. And I don't know if we have to, because it's a regular scheduled meeting, do we have to do like an hour study session? And then we can, I don't know how it all works, or if you can just move this.
No, it, it can be done during the regular meeting, yeah.
Great. Uh, yeah, so that would be the only thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I know you're gonna try and keep the agenda focused on.
We have the unodded actuals too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
So, so that's what I was concerned.
Yeah, it's, and it's.
We are keeping it kind of folk. I definitely want very little on there, except we really need the unodded actuals.
Okay.
So, to confirm, you want closed session to start at six and then move over to regular or closed session, five thirty?
If five thirty for, if they can get here for five thirty, I would suggest a five thirty closed session, six o'clock start. That should put us, you know. Yeah, I mean, three-hour meeting would probably be done by nine.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the meta-point here is that anytime we've got an agenda that looks like it's gonna be at least three hours to plow through, we should at least have the conversation, should we have this earlier than normal, um, just to avoid getting into the wee hours.
That makes sense. All right, thanks. Um, adjournment, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Bye.
Bye.